Aleisha, please do roll.
Kevin? John? Absent? Jason?
Here.
Myself here. And Donna.
Thank you, Aleisha. Announcements. The next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, November 11th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the Glencoe Silverlake High School Community Room, 443-444. Acknowledgements?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thanks to all of our students for coming tonight. So, thanks for being here. But I do want to recognize two different individuals that both had ties and, on a sad note unfortunately, Don Bonert and Kay Link both have recently passed away. Kay was a junior high English teacher for us for several years and Don was working in our fieldhouse in community education and just on behalf of GSL, want to say to those families that were thinking about you and sending our sympathies to all of them. Wonderful people and great contributors to GSL.
Thank you. Any other acknowledgements? Public input relating to the agenda, first call. Public input relating to the agenda, second call. And third and final call for public input relating to the agenda. Hearing none. Reports and presentations. We'll have an audit report by Mary Reedy from Clifton Larson Allen LLP.
And in there are the slides that I'll be going over. Or you can look on the screen, I have them up there as well. I kind of took the shortened version and just used the PowerPoint slides to go over. But feel free to stop me at any time if you have questions. The information from the PowerPoint does tie directly back to the audited financial statements. Just easier to look at and you can look at a few years going back as well. So, before I get started on the slides, one thing you'll notice as you're reading, if you look at your audit report, within the MDA and then within those first couple of statements, your government-wide statements, the expenditures are a lot different than last year. They're a lot lower. Okay? So what happened is your pension liability related to TRA, so that's the underfunded piece of TRA that's allocated to each of the governments, went down significantly. So if you look at last year's pension liability and compare it to this year, last year was $29 million and this year went down to $10 million. So it's a $19 million swing. So it really throws all of your comparisons for government-wide off. So those won't be in the PowerPoint. In the PowerPoint, we just hit on fund level. And on fund level, that liability doesn't get recorded. It's just government-wide. So I just wanted to point that out as you're reading. You know, you might be reading your MDA. You'll see that shift and see those revenues or the expenditures go down significantly. And if you have additional questions, I know Michelle can reach out to us as well if you need more explanation or anything. So we'll start with page two of the actual... Oh, sorry. If you're in your bound documents, if you start with your first slide. Page 10. That top slide up on your left. So this is your combining statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for your general fund. You can see each of the categories going across the top. So non-spendable and unassigned, assigned, non-capital. And then you have your capital-related restrictions. And then your total for the capital and then your grand fund total. So your total revenues and other financing sources was about $20 million. Your expenditures and operating transfers were about $18 million. So you had an excess of revenues over expenditures of about $1.2 million in total. So let's talk about what happened during the year. In your non-spendable and unassigned, if you look about three rows, you'll see a restatement of fund balance. So last year, the Capital Projects Fund actually went over their expenditures. And so we wanted to keep track of the total that was spent out of the Capital Project Fund. When we got to this year, we consulted with MDE and MDE said that if you were going to use some of the restricted monies from general fund, that we actually needed to move those expenditures to the general fund instead of showing them in the Capital Projects Fund. So if you look at that line, there's $392,000 that was paid for with unassigned. And then if you go far over to the right under your long-term facilities maintenance, $675,000 was paid out of your LTFM money. Also with that, there was a transfer into the general fund from your internal service fund of $440,000. Because the internal service fund was closed. And then another $400,000 of that internal service fund went to your Capital Projects Fund to help fund some of that shortage as well. So it's a lot of moving parts. But in the end, Capital Projects Fund ended up where it needed to be. And then the general fund is now where it needs to be. You can see your non-spendable and unassigned at about $3.7 million. That's about 22% of your expenditures. And your policy is to have 20%. So you are still meeting your fund balance requirements. Assigned is $400,000. These are the severance benefits that are being paid out of that category. You can see under your capital-related restrictions, health and safety, was at a negative $41,000 and then that ended up at zero. So that category now goes away. That now is considered long-term facility maintenance. And you can see that had $600,000 last year and then ended up with zero this year. Again, that was mostly your Capital Project overspending. So page three. We'll just quickly go through the categories. You can see general fund unassigned fund balances at $3.6 million. This also does include fund 10. So if there's revenues over expenditures, it increases it. And then if your expenditures are over revenues, it would decrease it. I think this year, Michelle said it increased by about $27,000. So that accounts for fund 10. So you're just shy of three months of your unassigned fund balances to your expenditures for the year. So page four. Your health and safety fund balance now will go away. That's at zero. Page five. Your state mandated reserves at $158,000. So this combines with health and safety, teacher development, and safe schools. Those are the categories within the state mandated reserves. Page six. Long-term facility maintenance reserves. Last year, it's $67,000 and then this year's at zero. So you'll always have funding coming into LTFM. And then it just depends on what projects you have going on. Oh, this one not in there? Okay. I will try and get it in there. Sorry about that. I'll make a note to get it in there. So then your next graph should be the operating capital. Is that one in there? Perfect. Okay. So your operating capital fund balance went down slightly from last year, $725,000 to $594,000. So again, this can only be spent for operating capital items that have been approved. So page eight. Your food service fund balance actually increased by about $30,000 from prior year. So you have $300,000 in there and you have roughly about $985,000 of expenditures last year. So food service fund balance, you should only be building up fund balance if you have needs. So if you know you're going to have repairs in food service, then your fund balance can pay for that excess in any given year. But you don't want to continually build up fund balance without a plan, right? Food service should run pretty much break even. Page nine. Is your community service fund balance. So community service fund balance and food service fund balance, you can only spend within those categories. You can't transfer money out. You have to use it for those assigned categories. So within your community service fund balance, you went up from last year to this year, $319,000. You have about $863,000 of expenditures a year. So within community service fund, you have some restrictions as well. You have the non-public, you have the just regular community ed, you have school readiness, and then you have ECFE. So each of those categories is positive except for your school readiness, which ended at a negative $28,000 this year. So that means the other programs are basically funding your school readiness right now. And then community service fund balance too should operate at a minimal as well. Those are the programs that you're offering to students. So you want to continue to monitor that and have a plan for that balance as well. So page 10. Your debt service fund balance went from $136 last year to about $245,000 this year. You had about $35,000 of bond proceeds that actually had to go into the debt service fund from your capital bond that you issued. That was to help pay for the current year interest payments to make up for the lag of when the levy would start for those payments. So page 11. Your Capital Projects Fund balance. So you went from a negative $1.8 million last year to a positive almost a million. So with all of the transfers and the funding, we got it at break even for last year's project. And then this year, you issued another million in bonds to pay for road, the parking lot. And only about like $100,000 of it was spent in the current year. So we would expect that to be zero next year and potentially closed out if everything is done. So page 12. Here's the district's general fund revenues. State sources, you can see is the biggest piece of this graph. Each year it shifts a little bit, but not significantly. So if you were to look at last year and this year, they're fairly similar. If you turn to page 13. So your weighted average daily membership. This is why state would have increased as you increased your student count as well. So you had four increase in secondary and then two increase in elementary. So with your four in secondary, you actually get the 1.2 funding. And then your two in elementary just counts as a two for your weighted. So page 14. Then we'll get into some comparisons about how the district is doing compared to state and then other school districts of similar size. So the state is going to be your gray. Districts of similar size is going to be orange. And then, of course, the district is blue. So district and school administration. So the state is always a year behind. So you're looking at 17, 18. So if you compare 17, 18 of the district to the state, you're well under both of those categories. And then even for 18, 19, you even dropped some in those two categories. So page 15. Then regular instruction, putting the money into the classrooms. You can see for 17, 18, you're above similar districts of your size and then just slightly under the state. And then 18, 19, you actually increased that a little bit from prior year. So page 16. The vocational instruction. You can see for 17, 18, you're right on with the state and a little bit over... Or a little bit over the state and right on with districts of similar size. And then you just dropped a little bit to 18, 19. So vocational, and those can fluctuate from year to year depending on what programs are offered during the current year. Page 17. Special education costs. Well above other districts of similar size, both in 17, 18, and 18, 19. And a little bit under the state for both of those years as well. And I have seen special education costs go up in all of the schools that we've been auditing. And actually, a lot of them come out negative. They're actually spending more than they're getting refunded. Page 18 is your instructional support. So here, you're under for districts of similar size. And you're under compared to the state as well. Page 19. Your pupil support services. You're pretty similar, 17, 18, to other districts your size. And then you increased in 18, 19. And you're under for the state. This does not include transportation. Just the counseling, guidance, health services, things like that. Then your sites and buildings. So again, this can fluctuate from year to year. You can see 14, 15, all the way up to 17, 18, just depending on what projects the district has. So both 17, 18, and 18, 19, you're still, you're well above other districts of similar size. And it's also going to depend on how old your facilities are, how much you do to upkeep them compared to the other districts. And then also, like I said, what projects you have going on. It's not necessarily a bad thing to have more in any given year. Page 21. Capital expenditures. So these, we call them the 500 codes. So as you go throughout the year and you do it for a capital outlay, they're coded here. And so this would be considered your capital expenditures rather than your sites, buildings code. And you can see for 17, 18, 18, 19, you're under the district average and other districts. So transportation. You can see 17, 18, pretty significant. Lot higher than other districts of your size. And then, again, higher than the state. And then 18, 19, brought down quite a bit, but still a little higher than both of those categories as well. So next one, food service. So the cost here. So you're operating higher, about $613 compared to the other districts of similar size at $553 and the state at $553. But again, no concerns. Your revenues are covering the expenditures in that category right now. Page 24. Community service. This one, again, is hard to compare to other schools. You just don't know what they're offering, what programs they have. So right now, you're over districts of similar size, but under what the state average is. Page 25. Debt service. So right now, your debt service expenses, so principal and interest, is lower than districts of similar size and state average. And then Capital Projects. Dropped significantly. 17, 18 was the wrap-up of your last big project. And then 18, 19, again, we didn't see very much in this category last year. So you're well underneath the state and other districts. So I don't know if there are any follow-up questions?
Mary, when you look at page 22 and 23, the transportation and the food service, like you mentioned, we are above both schools of our size and also the state. Does that, do either of those ever get broken down into districts that provide their own fleet of transportation or their own food service versus contracting out?
They don't. They're all coded to the same.
Okay. Thank you.
And I actually have a mixture of schools that do the contracted and in-house. And I will say, a lot of them are going contracted rather than in-house. Yes. Okay. Mm-hmm. That's correct. Yep, yep. So you have lower costs in that category. Which is what you like to see, right? Putting it back in regular instructions, so...
Mary, when you look at special education costs on page 17 of yours and 17 of ours as well, when you're looking at schools of similar size to us, yes, the district is of same size. But is the population of special education students greater in, say, a district like GSL versus the districts that are comparable in size?
That could be. I don't think that we get that information. But that could very well be of why your costs are higher.
Another question, Mary, for instructional support on page 18. Is there still a designated set-aside percent for staff development?
Yes.
And what percent is that?
2%.
Two?
Yes. Unless you talk with the teachers and they reduce it.
Okay. Thank you. Michelle, for budgeting purposes, we have the 20... Excuse me, the 2% set-aside that hasn't been adjusted lower, correct? Okay. Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I think that's right. Yeah, I have it written down somewhere.
Okay. Thank you. Good explanation of that. Does that amount of money carry forward? Or is it something that is a goal to spend down to zero each year? And we still have a couple of positions that are being funded salary-wise out of staff development as well? Okay. Any other questions for Mary? Thank you once again to Mary and also the rest of your group that came out this summer and did their work with our district office staff. Thank you for the work that you did. And also, once again, a thank you to the district office staff and Michelle for all of their work along with the auditors. It's quite an undertaking, but once again, very, very much appreciated by the board and by the taxpayers of GSL. So thank you. Administrator and committee reports. Business Manager Sanders, are you ready for us? Okay. Thank you.
The one thing that you might remember, might not remember, is with the legislative session this year, one of the items that was in there was called school safety supplemental aid, and that was contingent upon the state budget. So the legislators made a one-time appropriation up to thirty million dollars, contingent on the balance of the state budget when they closed their legislative session or June thirtieth. Once that was done, if they determined there was excess funds, then this appropriation was set aside for school districts to get some additional school safety supplemental aid. Last year, they had some dollars set aside, but it was in the form of grants, you could apply for that. At that time, we didn't apply for anything because we had kind of finished everything that we needed with our building projects. So now this year, you don't have to apply for it, you automatically get it. We're supposed to see the money come through on our state payment at the end of October, and we're going to get roughly about fifty-five thousand dollars in additional Safe Schools money. So what we've done at this point is I've reached out to the administration and some of the cabinet team to give me their ideas, their thoughts on, on some additional things that we would like to address now that we have some additional funds. We've had kind of an ongoing list, it's kind of like, okay, if we could do this, this would be nice, if we could do this. So we're kind of compiling that list right now, we'll get quotes on some of those things, and then we'll kind of prioritize, see how far our money goes. We are fortunate because we did a lot of things with the building project, so safety-wise, we're in, in some good shape, but we're going to continue to evaluate those lists over the next, you know, few weeks, months, and then, you know, something as simple as upgrading some of our two-way radios that are getting older. So those won't be a big expense, but it's something that we can now look at doing. It has to be used for the same items that the Safe Schools money is reserved for right now, it has to be reserved, we don't have to spend it all, it can, that's a reserved account, we've got some in there from last year, but we continue to upgrade our cameras with that money, those type of things, the radios, the cameras, some supervision-type stuff at, at ballgames, all those type of things. The money also can be used for some of your counseling or mental health services, so that's something that we could also take a look at, but this is one-time money, so you want to be careful with that, you don't want to, you know, tie that to a position or a person that might be ongoing. Now, if there's an additional, okay, we would really like to do some additional counseling as a one-time thing that we could offer, then we could look at that or talk of that, or talk about that, so. That was good news, that the state had that extra money to help, help school districts out to continue to make sure we have safe campuses for our, for our students and families, so. Any questions?
Thank you, and thank you for emphasizing that, that it is a one-time.
It's one-time, yep.
Caveat, because that is something that can very easily be forgotten or unnoticed, so it's nice to have, but it is a one-time expenditure type of concept.
Yeah, you don't want to go out and, okay, we're hiring a person and then, okay.
Have to maintain that or sustain it.
We're not having any trouble getting our list.
No, no, we've got, other than.
Goals quick.
A Keurig coffee maker, which Mr. Butler thinks he needs, but I said, yeah, so.
For the staff.
For the staff, yeah. So yes, we've gotten a good list going already, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, and good evening, everyone. Here, we talked a little bit about professional development in the auditor's report, and, you know, that's what, what the role of our instructional leadership teams takes on at both buildings, and we've talked about the book we're reading, Culturally Responsive Teaching, and chapter one, we're, we're working together as a, as a leadership team, working on, you know, what is a dependent learner and how, how we can, how we can create independent learners, which is the first step to, to working with and embedding culturally responsive teaching into our daily work with kids. You can look down under PBIS and PRO, you're familiar with our theme for the year. We've had our first all-school meetings in October, and special recognition to our kindergarten team for planning, for planning Lincoln's, it was, it was fabulous. And you can see our classroom lessons at both buildings for October are conflict resolution. So Lisa Thompson and Kelly Johnson will be visiting each classroom, and I'm presenting that, that consistent lesson at a, at a grade and age-appropriate level. If you look down toward the bottom, under curriculum and assessment, we're going to have our literacy training on the twenty-third with our, with our rep from Wonders, we'll continue the work we're doing with her. And then we're, we're hoping to review our math curriculum this year with eyes on perhaps making a purchase for next year. I know it's a, it's a tool that our, our teachers are really, really looking for. If you look on the back, I want to direct your attention to Title Four, and, and this was, this is new money from the state, and you can see the total, and it, it gave us a good opportunity to look at how we can, can use MDE's criteria and use this money to support kids and, and, and help teachers work with kids. So MDE's criteria were to use this money, you have to identify programs that are, would fit under a well-rounded education and safe, safe and healthy schools. So under well-rounded, we made some purchases for STEM. Give a lot of, a lot of appreciation to Scott Pika and Heather Pierce, we're going to buy Chromebooks for Lakeside, so the kids can continue their work and, and really beef up their work on coding. And Scott is looking at, at a yet-to-be-determined field trip coming out of that Title Four under well-rounded education. At Lincoln, Mrs. Pierce, she, she did an amazing job looking, what, what she can do to, number one, create a library for teachers so that teachers can check out STEM materials for their center work, and then she's done a lot of, a lot of purchasing through that money on Makerspace. Kids can come in, give up their recess, and, and work on Makerspace with her, so appreciation to them. And then finally, under safe and healthy schools, our counselors, Kelly Johnson at, at Lincoln and Lisa Thompson at Lakeside, they purchased a mindfulness curriculum, and those Hoberman spheres, some, some of you may be familiar with those, if you command a, like, it's like a net, goes in and out, really good for breathing and, and relaxation for kids, so. It was kind of like, you know, for us Christmas in, in September, when the Title Four dollars came through, it took a little bit of, of background work, you know, what we can use it for, what we can't use it for, but some of the materials are already, already arriving, so it's, it's fun to see, to see, especially STEM, have them unpack those and get them, get kids working with those materials. You can look under school community partnership, conferences were going on this evening and will continue the rest of this week, as well as the Scholastic Book Fair. Next week, we have our Grade One STEM Night, and then the Fall Carnival on the twenty-fifth. Excuse me. And I'll conclude by saying, all of, all of this, none of this could happen without the, the efforts of our, of our staff at, at Lincoln Elementary and Lakeside Elementary, so much appreciation to all of them and the extra work they do inside and outside of the classroom. What, what questions do you have?
Bill, each of the Title One through Four, are those amounts about the same as they've been in the past, or are they a little higher, a little lower, roughly?
Yeah, they, you know, they are very, very similar, and, and I'm thinking, you know, within, you know, certainly within five percent, so very similar, we see year to year. And, you know, certainly hope Title Four, I can say the same for that, because that is a, a nice boost for us for, for, you know, purchases we, we were not able to make otherwise, so.
Now, Title Four, is that based on our enrollment, or what, how did we get thirteen thousand five hundred dollars?
So, when, when Don and I went to the, went to the Title Conference, a, a person asked that, and he said, well, you'll, you'll have to ask one of our statisticians at MDE, but the formula is, so basically, your, your dollars are based on the number of children identified in, in poverty. And then you can serve all children, though, through, through Title Four.
Sure.
So I know it's not answering your question fully, but that, that's the knowledge that we took back from the conference.
No, that's appreciated, thank you. I mean, and, and the things that are being talked about and purchased are obviously good for all kids.
Right.
So it's, it's nice that they're not putting too many mandates or too much constraint on how it's spent and stuff, so that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Foss?
I'm going to start with our school improvement areas, and I know I talk about professional learning communities or our PLCs every time we're here, but with the new schedule, we're able to meet about twice as much as we were last year, so they meet every Tuesday, Thursday. The things they talk about during that time, they meet as a grade-level PLC, curriculum PLCs where they're working on their standards, empowering those standards to meet all learners' needs, and also department PLCs, where if it's a special ed, science, social studies, they meet as a seven-twelve department to make sure that they're aligned in curriculum. The other area I'd like to talk about in school improvement is our PBIS committee. This is the first year where we are on our own, we don't have any trainings that we attend per month, so we are sustaining. Without this training, we probably will have one per year that we'll go to now, which is just sustainability. We have our Panther Pride Student Spotlight Celebration, this will be our first of the school year, coming up on October twenty-eighth, and again, this is where four individuals will be recognized from each grade, four meeting criteria on the matrix that we have. We also have a PBIS Carnival, which is planned for tomorrow afternoon. I believe the juniors and seniors will be in the carnival during fifth hour, our ninth and tenth graders will be in the carnival during sixth hour, and then our seventh and eighth graders will partake in this carnival during seventh hour. And I know last year, this is going to be the second year we've done it, last year was our first year, and I think it was a pretty big hit with the kids, they enjoyed it. Last year, I got pied in the face, so I think that's probably going to happen again this year. Hoping the kid doesn't hit me in the face as hard as he did last year with the pie, but they all had a good time, and it's been well-deserved. The, the students have had a fantastic start of the school year, and, and it's a way to recognize them for all the hard work that they've done and, and the expectations that they've been doing here at Glencoe Silver Lake. Another thing I'd like to talk about is Panther Power Hour, this is the third year, I believe, in our implementation. We have opened our STEM Lab, that's one more location that students can go to that opens up technology, it's open during both A and B lunch. Some of the courses, like video productions, for instance, only the STEM Lab computers have the capabilities to do that work, and it just made sense if we had somebody that could supervise it to open that up, and it's, it's been a pretty big success, students are using it every day. The other nice thing about Panther Power Hour is I have area schools that have reached out wanting to know how we run, that, they call it win time, which stands for what I need. I know Dasko Cato has talked to me, they're bringing win time to their school, they're implementing it this year. And also, Blue Earth has reached out as far as how does this look, what does it look like? Blue Earth has not been up yet, but the principal at Dasko Cato came in, they're the same year that I started here, we've shared a lot of ideas, and he's been over and toured during our power hour time, and it's just nice to see that area schools are, are looking to do what we already have in place, which tells us that we're doing, we're doing the right things here at GSL. Another thing for Panther Power Hour that I didn't have written down, but I think is important to note, what I've found over last year and the beginning of this year, we do have our media center open, and we do have teachers available to help all students, sometimes students have a difficult time asking for one-on-one help from teachers, and although we work on that advocacy of, of you need to be, be able to ask for help, I think sometimes it's easier for students to ask other students. So I've been working with Carol Silas and the NHS organization to set up student tutoring in the media center, which will be beginning probably in two weeks, I think, we're going to get through MEA break, see how things go next week, and then we should be all set with NHS tutors. The last thing I want to talk about in school improvement is our staff development committee, we have our teacher in-service this Wednesday, and I'm pretty excited about it. We have a staff meeting where I get to meet with them for more than a thirty-minute time, so I have about a two-hour staff meeting planned where we're going to talk about differing things from differentiation, crisis updates, we're going to talk about I, Infinite Campus data entry, we're going to talk about how to locate 504s, those are now on our Infinite Campus website, and then also how to locate our IEP accommodations for those students who have special education needs. We're also going to have a PBIS presentation with the data that's been entered into Infinite Campus, so Whitney Peters and Nicole Ross Camp are our PBIS heads, and they've worked with Jeff Jensen and the IT department to align all of our behavior referrals into the Infinite Campus to what our PBIS matrix is. So we can very easily pull data and see where we're having the most concerns with behavior, if it's in the morning, if it's in the afternoon, if it's in the hallway, classroom, cafeteria, it just helps us look at where are we having the biggest issues and how can we address that, which is backed up by data and not just subjective feelings. The other thing that we're going to be doing is during Workshop Week, Superintendent Sanju brought in ACE's Training, which stands for Adverse Childhood Experiences, and all the, all the teachers in the district were exposed to this training. There's also a documentary that goes along with that, and it's called Paper Tigers, and Jim Spoelater is kind of the individual who's really spearheaded this. I will be showing this documentary to all certified staff in the afternoon, it's about an hour and forty-five minute documentary. I've also asked Superintendent Sanju if I could open this up to our paraprofessionals, and he's, he had granted that, so our paraprofessionals are invited to attend too. It all is based on students with traumatic backgrounds and how they learn and why that looks a little bit different than, than maybe what your typical student would be, and I just find this immensely important, and, and I was thankful that we had the training in Workshop Week, and I wanted to follow it up with something here on Wednesday, so I'm excited to show that. The next area that I want to move into is our school and community partnerships, and the first thing that I'm going to talk about, I do not have written, but I, I do want to draw your attention to it, last week was Fire Prevention Week, and Glencoe Fire Department and Silver Lake Fire Department has worked very closely with, with our, with our school district during these times, with Silver Lake working with Lakeside and, and Glencoe working here with Lincoln and, and the junior and senior high school, but we've never done anything specific to the junior high. So this year, I worked with Tom Brinkman out of the Glencoe Fire Department, and he brought in a fire simulator last Monday and Tuesday, and had it available in the cafeteria in the mornings for students to practice putting out a fire using an extinguisher, using the PaaS system, and it was just a great educational system for our junior high kids to learn, you know, how do you use, how do you use a fire extinguisher, what are the different types of fire extinguishers, is there different ways to utilize each one? And for year one, I thought it was very good, I look forward to partnering with Glencoe Fire Department again next year, doing something similar throughout the week. Again, we have our cultural liaisons, PBIS programming is still in effect, which I talked about a little bit earlier. We are going to have video lessons this year that will start a week from today. Myself and Eric Anderson are working on lessons that will be presented during the rap class. They're about fifteen-minute YouTube videos where the students don't need to do anything but watch, and then afterwards, there'll be probably a five-to-ten-minute discussion based on those. So our first lesson that we'll talk about, that the students will see on Monday, is in-bounce and out-of-bounce, and basically what that means is where should students be and when should they be there, and kind of what goes along with if you're in a place that you shouldn't be and why you shouldn't be there, so it's just a teaching, education moment for them. We had our parent-teacher conferences last week on October seventh from five to eight-thirty, which was, it was great to see all the parents out, we had more junior high parents than we did senior high parents, but that's pretty typical. Looking forward to build on that into the winter months here. And then, two last things I want to discuss, a LIFT grant update for you as a board, our coding course is currently being offered first hour, and we just met today, we're developing a plan for some of the technology from that coding class to be checked out for our students. I talked last month that we have a Kajit wireless hotspot, and then some Chromebooks that were bought with those funds, and the, the idea was that, or the hope was that we could come up with a plan where students could check that out and bring it home if they needed to complete work. Our, also our food trailer, this one was written by Kristin Dane, the food trailer has been purchased, it's actually sitting in the, I don't know what I would call it, but the outdoor cafeteria, is that right? The plaza, okay? That sounds better. It's sitting in the plaza, and we're working with the Department of Health to make sure that it's certified, and also working on retrofitting the inside with needed utilities. So Kristin searched very high and low to find the trailer that she wanted, it is a brand-new trailer, it does have brand-new equipment on the inside, and she is putting more into it. So we have a meeting on Wednesday with myself and, and a number of others to discuss the unveiling of this, and if it will be this spring, or if we will wait till the fall when she opens her culinary entrepreneurship class, so very excited for that and excited for Kristin. And then the last thing, and I don't have a ton of information for you right now as a board, but last year, we had an issue with, with vaping that I brought to the board and said, we, it's a real problem that we have at the school, and we put together a presentation, and it was for the kids that we met with all seventh through twelfth, and we kind of talked about the health and the legal side of, of what that looks like. I would like to think that it was due to that presentation, but we have far less issues with vaping this year. Speaking with the Wright County principals, they have also seen a drastic downturn in that, so I'm hoping that we're kind of beyond the, the fad of what that is because of how dangerous it is for health. But one of the issues that I've seen this year is, is just misuse of social media. Multiple times a week, I see issues that have arisen from either Instagram or Snapchat, and unfortunately, I don't know if students understand the lasting repercussions of what that can be, and I don't think that parents necessarily know exactly what these apps are. So I've been working with our school counselors, I've also reached out to our chief of police, Jim Rader, I reached out to our county attorneys, Zach. Zach Linghass, to put another presentation this year together regarding social media and what appropriate use looks like. Unfortunately, there's an individual that I'd really like to bring in for this. He is not able to come in until December. So the preliminary stages right now in planning is that we're going to have these presentations given the day of parent-teacher conferences in January. And then that evening, we will also open it up to all parents that would like to stop in for about an hour-long presentation on appropriate use and what to look for on, on cellphones. Sorry, guys. So that will be coming in January. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I have one question on behalf of the students of GSL, because I know that they want to know the answer to this question. And that question that I have for you is, do you have a favorite flavor of pie that they could perhaps provide for you on that given day?
Yep, that's tomorrow, and it will be whipped cream. So we'll see how it goes.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Foss. Any other questions, board? Okay, thank you. Mr. Sanju, superintendent report.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of things on mine, as the rest of the stuff is on the agenda. I want to say thank you to Jason Schmitz. He opened up the PAYS Lab for the board this evening to kind of give you a little preview about what that program is and all the great things that are happening. So obviously, he did thank you, and, and I also thank you for your support in that program, because it's really going, really going well. I also want to say thank you to Matt Munchall for heading up our wellness program. That is up and running for our staff. We have the opportunity, working with our cooperative, to give that $500 bonus, but there are lots of activities going, not only from a physical standpoint, but the walking standpoint, but the mental health issues are happening. And so, and then I think we even have a speaker coming in to talk a little bit about the effects of sugar, and so the, the program is, is up and running. Our next community schools coming up here is on Halloween. We will be discussing the levy, and then we'll also have a musical preview. That's going to be happening here pretty soon. The levy update, giving you guys just a quick little, uh, the, the community forums continue to happen. We had one this evening. We'll have one again tomorrow. I've put a few videos out on, any of you guys seen that video out there, some of you? Out on Facebook, although you guys probably don't use Facebook, right? It's on Facebook and it's on Twitter, talking a little bit about the levy and hopefully answering some questions on that. We're, we're writing letters. We're meeting with people, answering phone calls, and, and hopefully continually getting that information out. Obviously, November 5th is a pretty important day for GSL. And then negotiations update, there's really not a lot to report from our standpoint, 284. We've been having lots of communication, talking back and forth, but we don't have a, do we have a specific date yet? I don't think we have a specific date set up to, to talk with 284. But hopefully, we can get that set up sooner than later. We're pretty close, but we still are working on the longevity piece is kind of the main issue with all that kind of thing. And then other than that, I've also been, I can give you guys a copy. I think I sent this out to you guys, and we'll talk a little bit more about this maybe at the end of the meeting. But, you know, every year, we need to do our World's Best Workforce Plan and, and basically Strategic Plan. And that is just kind of a draft in, in, you know, from the standpoint that I've been working on, having that from, you know, each year you have to do it. But then also, just to kind of have a, a long-range plan, I've taken the two and kind of merged them a little bit to, to kind of go off of, and, and talk a little bit about, you know, the goals of the district that we have and, and that kind of thing. So to start where we're at, and, and we can, you know, try to set a, you know, maybe at the end of the meeting, we can talk a little bit about a, a work session where we can talk a little bit more in-depth about some of the things on the World's Best Workforce and, and some of the things that we need to, to kind of go through on that. And then, uh, let's see here, there was one more thing, but I don't remember what, exactly what it was. I had it written down, but it'll come to me. You guys have any questions?
All right, thank you. Committee reports. Are there any committee reports? We had a Community Education Advisory Committee, uh, Committee Meeting, and the main thing that we talked about was, once again, still looking for officials, referees, umpires, and so forth, still looking for coaches and stuff in, in each of the areas. There's, continues to be a shortage of volunteers. Also continuing to look at the booklet of classes being offered through community ed and maybe revamping the look of that as well. So that's a report from the Community Education Advisory Committee. Any other committee reports? Hearing none. Approve the agenda action item. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I'll make that second. Questions or comments? Discussion? I have a motion violation, a second by Jamie, to approve the agenda as listed. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Approve consent agenda, action item, enclosure number one. Please note that there is an addendum to the consent agenda as well. With that being said, is there a motion? Is there a second? I'll make that second. Any questions, comments, discussion? I have a motion by Jason and a second by Jamie to approve the consent agenda as listed, with the addendum also as listed. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Old business, there's no old business at this time. Moving into new business. Item A, Education Minnesota GSL seniority list, action item, enclosure number two. Enclosed is the proposed seniority list for the certified staff. Superintendent Sanju recommends the proposed list to be posted for 20 days to provide employees with an opportunity to identify potential inaccuracies in the list. Questions, comments, discussion? Is there a motion? Is there a second? I have a motion by Don and a second by Alicia to post the Education Minnesota GSL seniority list for 20 days. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item B, SEIU Local 284 seniority list, action item, enclosure number three. Enclosed is the, is the proposed seniority list for employees of SEIU Local 284. Superintendent Sanju recommends a proposed list be posted for 20 days to provide employees with an opportunity to identify potential inaccuracies in the list. Questions, comments, discussion?
I'll just make the quick comment that with this one and that one, they'll come back next month, you know, and, and take a look at seeing where they are. And then if we ever need to use those for any type of budget reductions, we would use the one that has been approved. So.
And that's something that we do each year as well.
We do this every year.
And I was just going to add, if you look at the two lists, the teachers is based off of the 1920 because of their contract being settled. Everybody's placed where they were at 1920. The 284 list is based off of 1819 because they don't have a settled contract yet. So when you look at those two, you'll see a different date at the top. One is 1819, teachers are 1920. So we'll make sure staff is aware of that as, as well. But because the 284 is not settled yet, it's based off of 1819.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions, comments, discussion? I'll entertain a motion at this time? Is there a second? I have a motion by Jason and a second by Alicia to post the SEIU Local 284 seniority list for 20 days. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item C, Authorization to Continue Limited K8 Student Transportation During the Winter Months, action item. The GSL School District finished, or excuse me, furnished a limited expansion of the student transportation for K6 students living greater than one half-mile from Lincoln last year, and for students in grades seven and eight living greater than one mile from school. It is proposed to implement expanded transportation services again during the 2019-2020 school year, beginning on November 19th, 2019, and ending on March 22nd, 2020, under the conditions specified for this year only, at no additional cost to the school district. Questions, comment, discussion?
Basically, this is something that we do each year to kind of help out families that have that tweener distance of, of where we're at. And if we have room on the buses, we make that work. And so, so far, every year, we've, we've been making that work, and, and so we'd like to continue on with this service.
And this is the same as it was last year?
That is correct, yep.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion at this time? Is there a second? I have a motion by Don and a second by Kevin to adopt the limited expansion of the school district's transportation services during the 2019-2020 school year, under the conditions specified. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item D, MSHSL Foundation Resolution, action item, enclosure number four. Activity Director Schwartz plans to apply to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for reimbursement of activity fees from students who qualify for free and reduced lunches. Money from the MSHSL is available to offset the reduced fees received from qualifying students. Superintendent Sanju recommends adopting the resolution in support of the grant application to the MSHSL. Questions, comments, discussion?
We've done this in years past, and, and we put this on, but this is the first step that you have to have in order to apply for these dollars through the foundation. And so you need to have a, a roll-call vote from the board to say that you support this.
I will take a motion and a second, and then we will do a roll-call vote. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay. I've got a motion by Alicia and a second by Jason to adopt the resolution supporting the district application to the Miniso, Minnesota State High School League Foundation for reimbursement of activity fees. This will be a roll-call vote to be taken.